Food truck or whatever you want to call it, open that thing, cotton candy, cheese or thing. Yeah, they open it up there.
Right now that's the ownership, you know, with that investment.
Yeah.
That's about, it can take the couple months of what you're just over.
Was, was, was that sale through a real?
I didn't see it somewhere.
Neither. I don't know.
I can't imagine if you'd tell me that. Maybe it's a proposal, but maybe this.
Cones are up, aren't they? They ordered, okay. I thought they were gonna do it today. Now he said, oh, we're not gonna do days. It's like, go, here we have it all.
What about the fair season?
And my, there's some on the back walk trail too, one in the park.
Come on, practice next week.
Oh, did we turn, have we turned that clock ahead any before you, have we done? Well, it's always a minute and a half behind. But it was like a minute and a half behind while we did. Nope. Well, we'll make it, was it? I'll work. Oh, this here?
No, I said, uh.
Oh. Well, one is a one, how small shop one bill? I don't want the three, I don't want the three either. Are you giving them any update on the sewer when we're out with the schedule? Did they get a new one or?
They got the new one when Paul was there.
Did they last month, it didn't change, that's fine, I didn't.
You know what? Why don't you do that?
They do, I'm not.
And you're gonna pay with the bills, you're gonna just explain that.
I just, yeah.
I put that under you. Or Jared, you can fight over it.
But we only pay.
We will now call the meeting to order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Considered public, for which it stands. One nation, one God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will now recess. The regular city council meeting. At five thirty-two. To conduct the public hearing. On water, sewer. I and I. Weed and snow. Proposed assessments. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Okay, anybody that wants to say anything, we will ask that you come to the podium. State your name and address. And please keep it to just a couple of minutes and explain what your problem or concern is.
Deborah Olson at six hundred Dewey Street. Um, I am questioning the validity of the sum. Um, for the penalty on the I and I. Uh, one, because, uh, in, right in your I and I progress report, it stated seventy-five dollars per month. Until compliance is met. And so if you do seventy-five times twelve equals nine hundred dollars. And so I'm speaking personally on my own property because I cannot get a plumber to take off the cap of a second, um, main drain. You're assessing me at over a thousand dollars, which is over and above the twelve-month penalty. And so I need that to get readjusted.
Uh, Ms. Olson, did you contact our office for breakdown of your bill?
Every time I contact your office, I get a different answer and so I go by what my water bill is, I take off, I pay my water bill. And only the water bill.
Okay, um, I can tell you this is actually over a year's worth on this assessment because of the timing of when we, uh, polled the last charges. But we'd be happy to look at a full review of your account.
You better be, because you've already submitted to the county for reimbursement for past two years. And so this should be only for this, the past twelve calendar months. Equally nine hundred dollars.
Okay, and.
So I can't say anything because I was neglectful on not bringing it forth on the last submission to the county, but this time I am.
But, but you, do you have record of when you did contact our office?
Deb, can you go back up to podium, please? I don't want people sitting down in there talking.
'Cause, 'cause that is really the first place to start, I don't have any record of that.
My record, I have it at home.
Okay.
Of when I contacted. I'm not gonna sit there and diddle about when and where, but I have on multiple occasions. I've done it through email, I've called.
Okay, since this notice went out, though, you did contact us.
No, not since this notice.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I'm not gonna, I'm bringing it to you now.
Okay, so, so what we can do, Ms. Olson, is we can pull a full history of your account. Now, it is more than a year because we cut the billing cycle last year off after the June quarter. We cut it off earlier, so there is more than a year. And there also is late penalties anytime that account rolls over, so there's an additional twenty-five dollar late.
But the late penalties is only for the water bill being late. It's not a monthly payment for a late I and I penalty. Those are two separate issues. And so when you look at, if you're gonna do the twenty-five dollars on top of that. Then you're gonna start either having to determine by a statute or by a judge.
Yeah, so, so what we could do, Ms. Olson, is we need to look at the full history. We need to go back and look at the year's worth of history on that, I can't answer that right now. Um, if I would've known ahead of time, I could've brought that with tonight and we could've reviewed that. But what I'll need you to do is get in touch with our office and we can go over that with our utility billing clerk. Okay?
That's fine.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to, to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for or against this matter?
And then again, since you are submitting it into the county, then I'm requesting that my submission be waived or put on hold until we discuss that billing.
We have thirty days from the adoption of this rule, so you have, we have thirty days until that is actually turned over to the county. That's how the statute reads, yep.
That's what I wanna make sure that it's on record that we discussed that at all.
Is there anyone? Who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Okay, at five thirty-seven, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting. And I'd like to ask, is there a motion for adopting resolutions twenty, twenty-one dash twenty-three? And twenty, twenty-one dash twenty-four approving the assessment rolls?
I will second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will now move to the triple E storage site plan and early start requests. Now, everybody on the council has all the info that was sent in our packet. Now, does anyone have anything to say about this? I must. Sarah?
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, just so you're aware, I did, we had a number of conditions with the planning commission. Um, that came through, we've been working through those with the developer. Um, the ones that have not been satisfied or were still outstanding, we wanna make sure are included. Are in that resolution that was included in your packet. So, um, one of the late adds was the building fascia requirement. I do have a sketch that's been in placed into the packet now, um, into the final plans and it's a very minor, simple sketch, which is all we would require. Um, but that condition has been satisfied, as are the others that aren't listed there. Um, but we did keep those other like easement requirements and, and those other ones on that approval so that we have a clear record of that.
Okay, I, I do have a question. Do we have a light, lighting plan? I think that was missing.
Yep, that is in your packet.
Okay.
It is sheets.
C seven.
C seven.
Seven, okay.
For the record, I'm okay with the lighting.
Yeah.
I'm okay with the lighting.
Okay. And that was one of the conditions the council had to approve the lighting?
Okay.
Okay, as for myself here, I see no problem with approving the site plan and the early start provided they meet all the conditions that were listed. Now, there's a few they have not met yet. But the city will not be responsible if there is any liability or damage. I don't know what the rest of the council wants to do on that.
I would just speak in favor of that. I would, I would like the early start if it's at all possible because I, um, I think it's a good project and I would hate to see it delayed.
Does anyone else have anything to say on this?
I'm okay. I'm okay with, uh, everything they have as, um, as long as everything is brought up to our, uh, recommendations.
Can we get? A motion?
I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution and the early start. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will now consider the
Mr. Mayor.
Gambling premises permit for the Stone Creek Golf Course.
Just, just one item. That, um, early start, they do have to sign that letter as part of that approval, is that correct? They have to, they need to sign and acknowledge that releasing the city of all claims or liability?
Yes.
Yep. We'll now move on to the gambling premises permit for the Stone Creek Golf Course. Now, what I would like to propose right now. This is just my opinion. Pine, I believe it's Pine Center. We approve a temporary license for them until the end of the year. At which time, hopefully, the wrestling club will have their license from the state. They applied in August and were told it'd be three to six months. But I would like to approve a permit, temporary permit for the Pine Center to come in there and start, and set up and start doing, setting up the gambling right now. And then once, at the end of the year, if the wrestling club has their license by then. Pine Center will just move out and the wrestling club will come in and they will take over.
I agree.
And if something should happen and they still don't have their license, we can come back and give Pine Center another month or two of the temporary permit.
Yeah, she requested, that's fine. Six months?
Yes.
I think that's what their agreement was, six months. Um, I think that's fair. It couldn't, I mean, we don't even know if it's gonna be approved with Pine Center before the end of the year yet.
I'm sorry, who are you?
Heidi from Stone Creek.
Thank you. You said they, they're not even approved yet, Pine Center isn't?
Well, Pine Center was denied essentially via email, saying that they probably won't be approved. And until it's approved by the city, they can't go through the state to get that permit. And our contract with them is six months.
The, uh, right now, the wrestling club is delayed and it's similar problem we've had with other state agencies. So there's stuffs all turned in, they're delayed. I've reached out to gambling board twice, nobody's responded back to me on the status of the application. Um, when this inquiry came in, I did respond via email, I'm happy to share that with the entire council. That I was a little confused because we just approved the premises permit. I said the council ultimately makes the final decision, but I said they may question why there's another permit. I never said they were denied.
It was ultimately, they could be denied a hundred and eighty days, that it took, it would take the council up to one eighty?
They have the right to do that with any application, that's in the statute.
So that was their feedback to me, that I'm just reiterating what they had stated.
Well, this, 'cause I, I talked to people already and this is the way I wanted to set it up. Because I assume if they did it in August, by the end of December, that'd be like four months away. And the wrestling club should have their license by then. If they don't have their license by then, then I said we would extend it two more months or something for Pine Center. But I would like to set it up right now, a temporary permit till the end of the year. And then if they don't, the wrestling club doesn't have their license, then we'll extend Pine, Pine Center for another two months and and that would satisfy me is, because then you'd still, you'd have gambling in there now, 'cause they could come in and set up. And then when wrestling club is ready to move in. Then Pine Center will move out, so you'll still have a constant gambling setup in there.
The contract with Pine Center is six months, that's what they require for a minimum. I think that's where they wanna stay. It's something that Al has already signed with them. I don't know how to get about, I don't know if it's something that we can sit down and discuss later.
Oh.
So Pine Center is already has gambling authority?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Well, if you're gonna do it for six months, you gotta do it for six months, you can't go four and then say, if, once, once they get their permit, then we're gonna kick these guys out, that's not gonna work.
And they can come in on site, Foley can still be in on site with them, that's not an issue.
That's up to you, Mr. Mayor, that was different than what you told me you guys had agreed to, I don't, I don't have details of that conversation that you had.
Yeah.
I just know, like, I directed you to the wrestling club chairperson because they had indicated that they were concerned with another entity coming in that they wouldn't get back in.
Okay. Now, if, if we approve, Sarah, they could move in like tomorrow?
As soon as they get approval from the state, yep, is they have to get the sign off from me, um, a copy of the certified resolution and then the state has to approve it and then they're good to go. They're essentially, I don't know what the timing of that is at the state level, I can't comment on that.
The state hasn't approved it yet so far?
No. They submit the application to us first, get our approval, and then it goes to the state.
Is there, anyone else wanna comment here?
Well, how can Pine Center be approved when we haven't approved them yet?
They're established charity, are you?
Their state gambling is approved, they're already, they're already in premises with a different, different.
They already can, they're doing it at different locations, is what. The wrestling club is a new location, um, when, uh, Stone Creek lost their gambling prior, they approached the wrestling club about getting licensed. And so they're new in progress, so they had to like certify their gambling manager, they had to take the classes, go through all the training.
A new entity then?
What was that?
A new entity for gambling?
Correct, yep.
Well, then I would like to see us change that, we'll just go with putting in, letting, this is my mouth, and we'll let Pine Center come in for six months. At the end of six months, they will leave. The wrestling club, as soon as they get their license and get approved to go in there. We can let them, like, put a box in there. Can you, can you have two?
Two organizations can be in the same location, they can share. Um, and I think that'd be beneficial not only for Foley, but for us as well. I mean, they're new, their gambling manager, there's a lot of work, so they can work, they can see what happens and how, how it works.
But I would like to add a con- condition to that, I would like to see Pine Center, some of the money they make stay in the community. 'Cause that's the big thing, I want gambling, but I want the money to stay in the community. And that's what we'd like to see.
That's our intention.
Mr. Mayor, the, the city, like I had indicated with some, we, this question has come up before in council meetings. With what the entities and why they're not local. We can enact ordinances which require that. You can enact ordinances which require they spend in the local trade, they have, in the local trade area. They, we can enact ordinances that prioritize, they have to give the local entity priority over the non-local entity for gambling licensure and premises permits. That is a potential, the, the vehicle of that is though the city ordinance. That's something that there are requirements, in certain ways, we have to enact that process.
Okay, so if, if we put this in tonight, that would give them till through the month of March. That'd be six months. And then the wrestling club would take over, but the wrestling club could set up with Pine Center.
Earlier.
And then we'd have, they'd have two separate ones. And Pine Center on the condition they would donate some of their winnings back to Foley, the community. Now, do we have any other comments here?
Uh, my question is, do we want to, um, request that we have a, um, an ordinance set up as the city administrator suggested about keeping the money local? If we're gonna, I mean, if it's an ongoing thing?
We don't have one yet.
No, we do not have it in place, like I mentioned in the memo, we do not have anything that requires it, um, currently. It's not an unusual thing, it's very common, um, but it's really up to the council's discretion on what they wish to do.
Is there a model ordinance from?
Yeah, I, I, I have given you guys some samples in the past, so, and there were some in your council packet too that we had distributed before. Yep. And this is not, and, and so, you know, this has been in conversation here and there with gambling premises permits, because I think as council members, you realize like you're, who, what's, what this, what is this entity, I don't know who it is, you know, and so there's questions that have been asked, so it's not something new. It's been around a long time and I know other councils have asked about it, we just haven't proceeded with the ordinance.
Well, if you're gonna talk, you stand up there, we don't allow them to sit.
I guess you don't, this ordinance for keeping money in town? I guess if you wanna put one on the golf course, there's a few other ones I'd like to do too. Other entities, Foley area, Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, see, when I discussed this with you last Sunday, I guess I didn't realize that, that it had to be a six-month. Pine Center had to have it for like six months.
Well, I guess if I was Pine Center, I would feel upset, they're here to help us and help Foley Wrestling Club get started. And you're tying their hands and our hands to the first of the year. Why?
And that's why I said I, I would change my motion to allow Pine Center to move in right now. And then in six months, six months, they will be done and the wrestling club will take over, but under the conditions that the wrestling club can set up and operate also while Pine Center is, if they get their license, they can still set up in like in January, February. And then we will run at the end of six, we will, under the condition, they will donate money to the city of Foley.
Mr. Mayor, are you gonna come into the golf course to en- to ensure that Foley's doing their job correctly? No training, she doesn't have any six months of following? There could be a lot of issues, a lot of stress factors where we could just look at our staff and each other in general and say, it's too much. It's not working out and just be done. Unforeseen circumstances that it just doesn't work out.
With, doesn't work out with Pine Center or?
No, with Foley. I mean, there, there is no, you can't predict the future with this.
Yeah.
Nobody can predict the future.
Yeah, I know.
I don't think it should be anybody's choice to say they have to leave or they can stay, I think Foley should be more than welcoming to more than one organization. Especially with different bars in the area that don't have local organization, like the boxing club. They're not local, they're staying cloud.
We are willing. See, we, I, I don't mind this gambling, it's just that I do not if we got a local organization, that's who I want in the position. Now, Pine Center, a lot of their money will not stay here, that's what we don't want.
Do you know that? Rachel's here, she could discuss with you.
You are from Pine Center?
Hi, I'm Rachel Fetters, I'm, uh, with Pine Center Sportsman's Club, I'm the CEO. And then we also have with us Butch Smooty, who's the, um, vice president of the club as well. Um, so we have gambling right now currently in a site at JR Junction in Pine Center. Um, and we're already approved as far as being a gambling, um, being able to sponsor gambling. And, uh, the golf club did come to us and approach us to see if we would be willing to come down and do gambling at their golf club. Um, and we'd be happy to, but we have some conditions as well. Um, one of those was six months because it's a startup cost. For our club to get the new boxes down there, um, to, uh, support the, uh, the cash. Um, to purchase all the equipment for the, um, E-tab, um, and paper pull tabs. It's, it's gonna cost us around eight grand. So for us to say till the, if you decided with the initial till the end of the year, from a, a perspective for our club, it's not worth it for two months. And for six months. The six months was to see if our company or our business would work well with the golf club in general. And that was a, that was a six-month with continu- continuation, not a six-month and cease and leave. Um, so that, that's something that we would have to think about as a club, if we would even, you know, do that, if that's what you guys decided for us to leave. Right now at JR Junction, there's two, two clubs that support gambling and that particular facility. So it's our club and one other club, and we do simultaneously at the same time, they have their boxes, we have our boxes, and both at the same time. And we do support our community, Pine Center area, like you said, is not necessarily Foley, but we, we support local clubs that would come to us and say, you know, the Garrison Fire Department. We need money, and we would say, okay, five thousand dollars, we'll write a check for you, or the, uh, local area responders, or the township, the town hall. We donate to, um, those local establishments, and we don't have a problem necessarily donating to Foley, um, you know, if there was one to approach us. But what the startup cost, it takes a lot for our club to raise that money and to be ready to move in somewhere, so we would need to take that into consideration. After the six month period, we would like to be able to have that permission to proceed forward if the gambling is going well. And to share the space if needed, we would have to discuss that with my, uh, club because initially, we weren't discussing sharing the space, but we could, we certainly do that at JR's right now.
See, the problem we have there is the wrestling club, if, if they have to share it with somebody, they may not want to do it at all. Because they want to be the gamblers.
Sure, they want the full profits.
They want to, full time, they want to take it, you know, and if, if we keep you on there too, well then, they may drop out and then Foley loses it. Cause I know like the wrestling club, they'll, they had already said they'd be using their money to buy new mats for the wrestling team, they'd be setting up scholarships for wrestlers. And all this, and they do not want to work, if, if you guys are gonna keep going for years in there, the wrestling club may just pull out and just not do it at all there. Cause they want to have full control.
We could do the same thing, I mean, essentially, what you're doing is you're hurting, you're hurting businesses here, big time. You're hurting the golf course, you're hurting this charity, the potential for Foley Wrestling, you won't even give it a chance, I don't, I don't see that fit or right.
It's, it's not what I'm saying, it's what the wrestling club is saying.
Is there anybody here from the wrestling club?
No.
Well?
But they, they do not, you know, and I would, I'd love to see gambling out there, but you run into trouble when you get two different organizations trying to gamble, then you're gonna run into trouble.
You run into trouble with an inexperienced gambling manager as well, which is why we're here in the first place. Essentially, we're here cause Rum Rivers didn't have an experienced gambling manager at all. And the biggest mistake we did was leaving Optimus Club for the Rum Rivers, Snow Club.
I just. Now, well, what I'd like to see is give, uh, the sportsman's club the six months. And then see if the wrestling club even gets their license, or, or understands how much it's gonna cost upfront money to start something like that, it's gonna be more than eight thousand dollars, I'm sure.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, they're already established, they know what's going on, I deal with personally at different locations as well, and in the past, and. I've collected money from these organizations for different things I've done in the past with different nonprofits, so my recommendation is. Go six months and see where the wrestling club is in six months, if they're interested in doing it at that point.
Well, I know when I talked to the head of the wrestling club there, he didn't think they would want to go in there unless they were the only one in there, that, that's. What I had gotten from the way he talked, they, they would like to be the only gambling entity in there.
When we signed paperwork, he did not say that at all, they just wanted paper pull tabs, like two boxes to start with behind the bar, because they don't have experience and they don't know anything, and it is expensive, they couldn't afford the E tabs, they didn't have money for anything. And I said, would you be okay to share? And he said, absolutely, hands down, one hundred and ten percent.
And my experience already is, I'd rather have twenty E tab machines than twenty paper boxes, is what I'm seeing, in, in this, how this has changed in the past year.
Mister Mayor. One question that came to my mind, uh, if the wrestling club, if they're concerned and the city is concerned about them, um, receiving, you know, profits from the gambling. If Pine Center is in there for their six months and longer, can't they also apply for donations from the club?
That's what we've discussed.
And so, that's a win-win situation for everybody.
Well. We will change every, we will allow Pine Center to come in now for six months. At the end of six months, we will discuss it with the wrestling club and with Pine Center once again. But we will first see what the wrestling club comes up with. And see what their opinion is on it.
Do you need a motion for this, Sarah?
Yes, I do, I need a motion, a date specifically too.
I motion, uh, resolution twenty, twenty-one dash twenty-five to allow, uh, us waiving a hundred and eighty day waiting period for Pine Sportsman Center Club effective ten-sixth tomorrow. And we'll revisit this situation after a hundred and eight, or after six months and see, uh, what they're gonna do with it.
I'll second that, we've had a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
I have some, just further discussion, just so that you're aware, um, we have club meetings that we have to vote on things as well. So with this being different than what we had discussed earlier, what we thought the original arrangement was, I have to go back to the club and we have to discuss this. So I, I just want you guys to be aware that the idea of us investing eight thousand dollars to start a site was six months to see how it goes with the likelihood that we'll be able to continue. Us doing eight thousand dollars for an investment for possibly six months that may not happen anymore after that is a difference, that we'll have to go back to the club and get approval for that.
And Al has to kick out a charity, I mean, that's how the state works, I don't know how the council can decide, it's been six months now, Al, you have to give them a written letter that says you have to leave the premises. That's how gambling works, if you want somebody out, you have to give them a thirty day notice. So we would have to give them a thirty day notice to remove all their property out of, off the site, um.
I'm confused, you, before you said they can work in conjunction.
Yes, I am, I'm for that, sounds like.
So why would anyone?
They can't work in conjunction because Mister Mayor wants to review this in six months to see how it is. I think Pine Center should be able to come in and say as long as they please, as long as they, they want, as long as we all work well together. Our business, we run it, the staff is there, we all need to jive, if they're not successful here, they might want to leave early, but if they are, and it's good, it's a good turnout for everybody, I wouldn't want them to leave. And as a gambling organization, I would sure feel used.
But for my motion was for six months and then review it, so if the wrestling club wants to come in in six months and do two pull tab jars and not E tabs. That's a win for you, cause we can still allow them to come back in Pine Center after six months.
But we would have to say pull tabs Foley can come in for E tabs, it's not to the board to decide, they get E tabs or wrestling, it's to the owner and to the leasers, it's, that's how it is.
Well, yeah, I heard, let's talk to the wrestling club in six months, let's talk to Pine River in six months, what about the golf bars, you gonna talk to them? Cause they're ultimately the ones working with them, not you guys, we are. So why would, you need to talk to either one of them, it's kind of a business decision, is it not?
Unless you're gonna take over the fees, if there's a short box, the city wants to take that over with any gambling, I don't know why we're even here in the first place, honestly.
Because you can't do nothing without our approval.
But we could in the past, just that it's Foley Wrestling Club, we were denied, essentially probably going to be denied because Foley already applied for, uh, permit with the city. Which they didn't even have permit in state, in state ordinance. And they're still waiting, and they might not even be approved for that.
That is why we're in contact with Pine River, because I feel they're a new, brand new, and that's what's taking so long.
Well, that's why in his motion, he had a setup where we would give them the six, we'll go six months and then we'll see what the wrestling club has up, to come up with. Because I want the wrestling club in there, period.
And what if we don't want them in?
I do too.
What if we did it, is my argument, is my argument, what if we said no?
Then why did you, why did you, why did you ask them?
Because we want them in there, obviously, I want to keep it local, but.
They asked us, to be honest, they came to us for gambling, and I kept saying, no, I don't want to do that, I don't want to do it, I don't want to do it, until they have a gambling manager with experience. Because I went through seven months of peer stress and headache without having an organization with a gambling manager with any knowledge at all, the testing didn't matter, was hands-on experience. I said, I think it's a bad idea until they're established.
Well, I'm becoming more confused the more we talk, because at six months, I thought I was giving you good, now it's to the point where I don't even know if we should do it at all. Because what you're, you're objecting to it when we're trying to help you, and six months, we could have one or none or zero, or you know, two in there, I don't, I don't know what.
Well, I think Rachel's point of view is they'll probably have a board meeting and then say no, because they probably feel like in six months, they have to be voted out, or will be voted out. And they don't want to take that six months to invest in, that's where I'm coming from, from their point of view. Cause I don't see anybody from that charity voting yes to come in for six months to be kicked out, to invest eight thousand dollars, they might not recoup that. Am I wrong, Rachel?
That's what we're thinking, and it, it's just a big investment for our club, we're, you know, we are a small club, we have been around for a long time, but, um, it is definitely something that we have to consider. I, I would really like it if you guys would consider to say that it's six month with the opportunity to stay, that, that would be better for us to be able to invest. Um, our gambling manager did research, we, the earliest we could be in there would be November one, so from that time, but, you know. I think I've said everything I wanted to say, Butch, did you have anything else that you wanted to speak to? No?
I do, but I don't.
Well.
You do still have the motion on the table, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It was made and seconded. Like I said, it just, it, it's just gonna be trouble because I want to keep it local, that's the main thing with these gambling, keep everything local if we can.
That's right, and the chamber had their golf tournament at territories, that's what I'll.
That's a different story.
Of keeping it local.
Well, with the motion on the table, we're gonna revisit this in six months, there's no, uh, there's no decision on who is staying and who is going. We're just going, we're issuing a gambling permit at Stone Creek for six months, and we're gonna revisit it after six months, correct? That's the motion on the table.
Can I change the motion, or do we have to nay and a this one right away?
You should nay it first, cause it's seconded.
Okay.
That's, I mean, a minor change, but not, yeah. You should really vote on it and then redo it.
You could pull the motion though, you can rescind the motion, can't you?
With the second? Where's the attorney, when you need the attorney?
We will vote on it, all those in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
Now redo it.
I'd make a motion to approve. Resolution twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-five. To allow Pine Center Sportsman's Club to come in and waive the hundred and eighty day waiting period.
Can I clarify? The hundred and eighty day waiting period is simply, you're waiving that, that's simply the council's required, they can sit on an application for that period of time. So that's, I mean, you're waiving that, if you're essentially gonna approve something, just approve it with a date, we, we sign off that, we waive it anyways, we just don't have to act upon it. Within less than a hundred and eighty days, you can wait that long to act upon it, so that's when they say waiving it, we're just, we're approving it, we're going ahead, we're not gonna wait the hundred and eighty days.
October fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
The motion has been made, do we have a second? I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, what do we have?
Nay.
Or two nays.
Two nays, and that was just approving the premises permit, period?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they, they're licensed, period.
Okay, we will now move on to department reports, Police Department, Katie McMillan.
Open forum.
Oh, uh, first before the department reports, we'll have open forum, if anyone wishes to have anything to say, step up here, state your name, address, and give a nice short.
Apologies, mayor.
Hi, I'm Rachel, uh, address one six one Dewey Street, the old church. Um, I got a letter in the mail saying that I'm getting billed for my sidewalk that's shovelled. Um, I did not move into my home until February twenty-sixth, and the due dates that were shoveled were, um, one eight of twenty-one and then two three of twenty-one. Um, I feel like I don't have to pay this, as I do not legally own.
Can you, can you?
Can you speak into the microphone?
Some of us guys are hard to hear.
Hi.
Thank you.
What was the last thing you heard?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah.
Okay, let's restart this, I'm Rachel, uh, address one six one Dewey Street, I live in the old church. Um, I did not move into my home until two twenty-sixth of twenty-one, I got a letter in the mail saying that I'm getting charged, um, for sidewalk shoveling on one eight of twenty-one and two three of twenty-one. I feel like I don't have to pay this, as I was not the legal owner of this, when I did move into my home, there was snow that was piled up from the street in my driveway to, where it prevented me from being able to park in it. So I had to park in the street that first night, and I ended up getting tickets, which I did pay, which ended up being a total of fifty bucks, so.
Sarah?
Yeah, um, when properties are changed, there is a process called a special assessment search. You purchase a property, you hire a title company due to title work, um, their obligation is to inquire with city, county, other entities if there are any outstanding bills or assessments. If you had a title company or a realtor, I would strongly encourage you to go back and discuss that with them, because that should have been dealt with during assessment search. And I don't think we have an assessment search on file when that process turned over, so. That would be my suggestion to you, because we do have an obligation to turn that information over, when we get title searches, we do it all the time, and it's water, sewer, it's, if they have snow removals, any other charges like that pending.
So what happens if the realtor comes back and asks for the information, what happens then? Cause I feel like I don't have to pay this.
No, and, and I, I understand, so I would encourage you to reach out to them and have them reach out to us. Um, because we keep record of every search that we do, we have to.
Okay, so then what happens after that?
It's gonna be between you and your realtor or your um, title company. But the city doesn't, we have to assess it to the property record on file, which is why you came up. Um, but there was a prior owner that then, there's usually title insurance that could kick in and cover that. It, it is not, it does happen. I will tell you it does happen and we do see these instances. There are times that the realtors or the title company do send us a check, cause it was something that was missed. And with the volume of transactions we've had this last year and a half, it wouldn't surprise me. You know, there's just been a lot of, a lot of title companies, a lot of stuff moving around. You know, that's where I'd encourage you to start and then get in touch with us or have them get in touch with our office.
Okay.
Cause I do, I do sympathize and I, I'm guessing something was missed in the title work.
Well, I mean, you're charging me a hundred and twenty-five dollars for something that I never even did.
Mm-hmm.
And I wasn't even here.
Yep.
I have no problem covering if I have to, but I feel like the old owners have to pay or someone else, cause I wasn't even the owner. They were from Canada.
Yeah, I think they were, they weren't even living there at the time. Cause they've been gone for quite a while, if I do recall.
Yep, they'd been gone for about two years, but they legally owned it still, so.
Yeah, um, certainly if you could get in touch with your title company, have them reach out to our office and we'll see what we can figure out. Um, on, I don't see, I don't recall, I think we checked this one, that there was a search done.
Okay.
So I do think that, that's, that somebody didn't do that legwork when the transaction happened.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for open forum? Okay, we'll move on to department reports. Police Department, Katie McMillan.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, the only thing I have for you, uh, my first helping back is our staff report. We had three hundred and nineteen calls for the month of September. Um, when looking over it, we are seeing a extremely, a growth in assist other agencies and our serious calls, which is like our solves and domestic, so we are keeping close on that. We gotta make sure everyone is safe. Um, the growth in the assisted or assist other agency calls are we are looking at probably due to the county being busy, um, they've been really busy on the west side of the county. So then they request us to go to calls on the east side that come up to, until they can get some layover here. And they're, they are also short staffed themselves. Um, as you can see, there's been an increase in people driving without a valid license. And controlled substance cases are up. Um, we are seeing an increase of the children calls in the schools of possession of the tobacco, alcohol and some controlled substances also in schools, so. Our officer victim has been very busy there. Um, and the assist, as you can see for the miscellaneous, that is mostly, uh, we've had a lot of assist person calls or assist motorists where they broke down and um, we came across them and assisted them if needed or they called with questions. Um, so we have, that's why that number's up. There was quite a few of them. And, and just, I like numbers and back in twenty twenty and September, we only had two hundred and ninety-seven, so we are seeing an increase. That is all I have. I'm not sure you have something to add.
Anybody have any questions? City Engineer, Jared Griffin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Um, I do not have any new updates for you guys, um, so with that, I will leave it open to any questions you may have for me.
What'd you come up with on the hole in the park, in the police department parking garage?
Oh, that was-
It was just a hollow spot. It looked like it came in, it was old from the, I would say when the alley previously ran into the building. And it head washed. A lot of it looked to be old and their the insulation against the foundation looks to be old stained. So, we went all the way back to where it was, they packed it in and then repoured I don't know how many feet it is in there, almost up to the drain. And uh, did that. So it should be good now, hopefully. And then actually poured under the door so the seam goes with the footing now, not inside the footing, which hopefully will leave me in a crack.
Any other questions for him? We'll move on to Public Works and Fire, Mark Patton-Phouse.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Lots to do yet this fall. Um, you had on the, Sarah, another thing, the Highway twenty-three sidewalk, did they, were they given this letter?
No.
Okay, so we're doing all the trails on the Highway twenty-three, Project Twenty Twenty-two. We're, uh, right now, we're responsible for the extra width on certain areas. Uh, ADA is gonna be changing sidewalks of four inches thick. They're gonna change them to the standard's gonna be six inches thick. Um, they wear better, less cracks, less chance for tripping, things like that, I believe is the reason. So with that, MinDOT's gonna cover that, but we're paying for two foot extra from, I believe Broadway to Mr. Jim's, cause we went to a eight foot instead of a six foot, so we can plow it with a, you know, wheel loader. Um, I think it's a good idea, we, they gave us the option to go to the six inch. They'll change this project, make it like their first one. And uh, we gotta pay that extra two inches of concrete for the two feet, wherever it is. And uh, it's gonna be an extra ten to fifteen thousand, I'll go against the uh, the sidewalk part of it. But that is eligible for funding, right?
It will be eligible for some of the brands.
So, but I think we should go with the six inch in the long run, cause we're gonna be, end up, you know, doing the maintenance on it, so.
Is that south or north side?
North is Batuminus, right? North is Batuminus, south is concrete, so. And Batuminus is all the way out.
I am working on getting uh, the final cost estimates. Because what will happen is we have to um, prepay that, that's how MinDOT projects work. You have to pay, pay it upfront and then if there's a they bill you or they send you a refund. We had to do the same thing with Glen Street many years ago. So I'm working on that and I'll have some final numbers, um, hopefully soon for you. Um, that was one thing that I got today that I was working with the state on.
Oh, that's fine. Real quick, uh, in the last month, you'd asked about water. Um, we're slowly going down, we're still uh, September, we were two hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day, which is actually below our average, but uh, compared to Ju-, July, when we were busy about just under two hundred and eighty thousand a day. So we're well you know, we're trending down. We are still in a, we just got a letter again Friday, we get our Friday letter. We're gonna remain in a drought warning phase for this area. So we have to have, be trying to get people to uh conserve water yet, but I mean, our use is way down. Uh, we were in drought restricted phase, remember? They let that go back. January, we were two hundred and ten thousand, so a hundred and fifty percent of that, we could be three hundred and fourteen thousand and D and R. You know, we're doing our job here, so. You had asked last month where we were on use with that. Um, the only thing, the sewer thing, I think you were given an update last month, but we've had some meetings since then. We're still anticipating MPCA will get all the permitting process done by January. Advertise in February twenty twenty-two, bidding in March of twenty twenty-two. With construction starting April or May of twenty twenty-two, completion spring of twenty twenty-three. We met with all the cities, Sarah and I did, virtually Monday, yesterday, on future plans and all that stuff, uh, population growth and, and uh, that was actually a good meeting, so. That's where we're at with that. Uh, anything else on the public work side?
How's the salt shed coming?
Salt shed, yeah, I didn't write that. Salt shed is uh, framed up today, I believe, it was almost. And the tarps should go on tomorrow, so it should be done. Um, they have one more layer of Batuminus to put on it. They would've done it today when they did the bank, but you know, they were down there. So I'm hoping within a week or so, they'll have that done. So that will get done. Then we have some trail paving to do yet. Uh, we didn't do that and that's already, that's why you see the cones on the trail, is, so be careful if you're walking. And uh, anything else on the public work side? Only other thing I got is the fire department, you know, we had a great open house on Saturday. The members did a good job putting it together. We had a lot of donations for, you know, the free hot dogs, free pumpkins, all that stuff. So we had a real good turnout and pretty much everything we had is gone, so. Was it stopped down? Thank you. And it was, I think it was very successful and we will make some plans next year to do some things different, so.
It was awesome, thank you.
Thanks for coming, everyone, so. Now we get to do all the homeschool groups, uh, come tomorrow, the St. John's Thursday, the kindergarten kids, we gotta visit, so that's all this month too. I don't think, unless I have questions.
Questions? Okay, administration, Sarah Broad.
Okay, I have a few different items. Um, the first is the council interested in offering an incentive to sign up for auto pay as we transition to monthly billing?
Yes.
I love it. If so, I need a motion just because we're, i- if that's something we wanna do, I need a motion so that we know, the auditors know why we're making those adjustments to bills. And that would just be by like a deadline of, we'd probably do it like March thirtieth.
Motion to-
I have a question. What, what's the advantage of the auto pay? Just we'll get better collections?
Um, we would get, it, it, we process all those auto pays all as a big group. So it's easier to receipt and process, but also we avoid the credit card fees. And that's like, you know, around five percent when people pay by credit card. So if they do the auto draw from the bank, we can process them more efficiently and we can also save on some credit card processing fees. But just the one time, not a, not a recurring, just the one time to get them to sign up. We plan on sending the form out with the newsletter when we do it, to make it as easy as possible um, for people to just email that form back or return it to us.
Yeah, I'm confused. What did she just say? It's only one time use?
Oh, no, one time credit for the ten dollars.
Oh, it's only a ten dollar, it's not a monthly credit of ten dollars?
No, 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 no. We're really talking some significant revenue shortages then.
Did you get any motion?
I motioned for ten dollars a month. Auto pay incentive.
Second.
That was, would you motion?
Ten dollars a month incentive for auto pay. Every month, ten dollars off your bill if you're gonna pay online.
Okay, so. You're giving me a heart attack here with revenues.
That's gonna cost us-
On the credit card charge, so you're saving money on the lawn part.
How about start with five?
That would cost the city a bundle of money.
I just made a motion. You can be, you guys can vote against it.
Everybody did it? Over a hundred thousand dollars?
Do we have a second on it, Gary?
I do.
Motion or seconded, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
You went nay?
Three nays, right?
Three nays, yep.
Um, I, I do have a, a question is, um, why are we even allowing people to pay with a credit card?
Well, we did that years ago, um, and that was um, partly to the request, but then we were having so many problems with NSF checks.
With what?
With insufficient funds checks.
Okay.
Um, and the credit card provides us an opportunity to get that bill taken care of at least, and we're not going back and forth with letters in the bank.
I'd like to make a motion to offer a ten dollar incentive for auto pay signup, a one-time offer for auto pay signup.
I would second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I'm confused. We just voted on this.
No, no, his-
Mine was gonna be monthly.
Every month.
Oh, yours is monthly.
Every month. This is just a one time.
I shouldn't be listening, yeah. Aye.
Just one time offer, yeah.
Sorry, missed that.
Motion carried.
Okay, and, and I'm happy to, to, we can look at, at the staff level, some other incentive options if, you know there's a potential, maybe something that's not that big, but maybe there's something else. We'll have some discussions and, and we can bring back some ideas if we come up with anything.
I had mentioned before that I would like to see some incentive to conserve water. Because we do have, not to give, you know, to make it cheaper if you conserve water, but to make it more expensive if you don't. Because I don't think, I think with our um, sewer project, we're not in a position to start discounting the bills. We just raise the rates, cause we need them, but um you know, we're going into a new billing system. I think we should look at incentives for conservation.
You just voted against my incentive to save you ten dollars a month.
Well, that was for auto pay. That wasn't to save water.
What's the difference? It's saving you money. It's water.
It saves money, but I'm more interested in, because we do have droughts around here, that we would have a setup where people would have an incentive. And I think our biggest water expenses wa- is watering lawn and washing cars in the summer. Is that correct or?
Yeah, and, and you know, we get that question every year and we charge the sewer on that. That's part of that to
Yeah.
not incentivize them to do it. You know, we, we charge that sewer rate.
Yeah, so I, I would like to see, I don't know what that incentive could be. Uh, or maybe it would be a penalty if you use more.
Yeah, and tha- tha- that gets a little more complicated because you have to come up then with residential and commercial and industrial. You have to come up with different tiers and charges at each of those levels and and you know, with our recommendation from Real Water, they indicated that, that is changing so much and you know, they, they indicated it's almost more complicated from a standpoint of businesses and residents understanding that. Um, but it, yeah, I, we can keep it and we can continue to look at it and, and see what the case is, but understand, you do that to conserve water. You have to charge other people more. You have to still get the same dollars and cents in and out at the end of the day.
I think that maybe water conservation, meaning less water would be used, not that less money would be paid.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think we need to have our base rate because we need to fund that sewer project. But um, if people use more water, I think they should pay more.
Okay.
You know, that, that the rate for a, over a certain amount of water should be higher.
Okay.
Or I don't know, there, if there's a better way to do that, I'm, I'm sure there's several options.
Did what you're saying, we, we, we got a limit of water that we can use. And after that, we pay more.
Yeah.
What you're saying.
And we do have that now, but I don't know, it, the limit is so high that I don't know.
Well, and like I said, to the other council, we made this adjustment this year. We're gonna look at it again. It's not necessarily, this is to get us part of the way. Um, we're gonna look at it again. This is not necessarily the final form. Um, we also do not know how those gallons are exactly gonna flow to St. Cloud and those charges, so you know, we're gonna have some tweaking to be done yet on this whole process. But we need to get started and start making, you know, steps towards that. So, I do think there's opportunity to look at a number of different things yet. Okay, anything else on that? Can I move on?
Move on.
Okay. Um, fee schedule updates. Um, I just put uh, one page here. This is just the changes we have. Sewer water, uh, swimming pool fees, and then um, I added the Solar Guard and IUP, and the reason I added that is because the OAA references back to our fees for applications. So that's just copying exactly what the county charges. Um, so I'm just gonna move this forward next meeting. Um, there's a public hearing when it comes to fee schedules. I just wanted to make sure you had any questions or concerns. If there's another one that comes up, I will let you know, but no action needed, just more looking for feedback if you had any.
This is January one.
This would go January one, twenty twenty-two, yep. But I do anticipate we're gonna get a solar app in the OAA area, so I wanna make sure we get that officially taken care of. Um, also to, um, I did get a question on, um, the county is going to address the official proposal that we have for the housing study. And it was asked, I said, we had budgeted some funds and we had talked about that. Um, but the county or the BEP had asked me, um, if we're still comfortable moving ahead with the housing study. Um, one of the things, it's a countywide housing study. So one of the things that differs is we, I'm gonna find it here. We could pay more to get more specific data. I wanna know where the council is at. If you want me to proceed with spending additional dollars in this proposal to try to get more specific data for the city. Right now, we're grouped like in a submarket with Foley, Mayhew Lake and like Maywood Township, kinda that whole area is like one submarket. And they basically took the county and split them up into different chunks. Kinda focusing in on certain regional areas. But I, I don't, I don't know what your opinion is on this. There, there could be some additional cost, um, but it would provide more specific data. Or if we're comfortable just stick, sticking with the county- sticking with the county, um, level, knowing that it might not be as specific to Foley, but it's, it's gonna be very close as far as, you know, I'm concerned, but, um, I could check with a quote if you wanted to get more specific data. I just wanted to run that by you now before I went any further into the discussion.
Well, my interest is in trying to get more senior housing in Foley. We had talked about that.
Yep, this is gonna study all housing.
Yeah.
All housing.
So would the more specific data help us to get funding for senior housing, or is that not a focus of this?
There, no, that is still going to be a focus. They're gonna look at all sort, all the housing options. But instead of just looking at Foley as its own little island, they're gonna look at Foley and, you know, a ten square mile radius around it, so to speak, as one submarket. We are probably gonna dominate the submarket because we are the only metropolitan area, but I just wanted to bring this to you, if, if it's very important for us to get very specific definitive recommendations from this. Or if we're looking at a countywide, our submarket, generally speaking, um, if that's enough.
What's the difference in price?
I, I don't know that yet. But we are gonna leverage being there's a countywide study. Um, I didn't wanna go through the whole legwork of additional proposal if it was an automatic no, we're good with the county or not. If you want me to look into it, I will. Not a problem.
I guess, you know, if it's a hundred thousand dollars or if it's ten thousand dollars, that would influence my decision.
Yeah, the whole proposal right now is like thirty-four thousand for the whole county.
And what's our share of that?
We don't have a specific share. It's up to the county board. So some of the cities are contributing, like, some of the cities wanna contribute, some don't participate in this. The county board hasn't officially made an action. I think they wanna know if the cities are willing to put in, which is why we put money in the budget, because we were definitely interested in it, being all the growth that we anticipate happening. Um, and I think we have fifteen in for our CIP. That doesn't mean we have to spend all fifteen, but...
And it would be more for the more specific data?
If you wanna spend some additional, yeah.
I think we get the data first and then decide.
Do you want me to get some more specific information, then bring it back?
I think we follow what the county would on their data, and then we can decide if we need a more extensive, uh, study done.
Yeah, right now, um, it sounds like we are interested in participating, you know, financially, St. Cloud and, um, Rice. Sock Rapids might be doing their own, from what we were, were told, and Sartell has not that much housing on that side of the river, so there are some other cities that are going to participate financially. Um, I just know with some of our unique needs and what we, and what we're thinking may happen with our growth, we may kinda boom quickly. I wanted to bring this to you for discussion before we move ahead with getting proposals. Or, or additional information, I guess, on this.
Okay, let's move forward with it.
Should I get some numbers and bring them back? Okay.
Yes.
And I mean, if we stay within our budgeted amount, is that something we're comfortable? If the county wants to move forward before I get back to you?
So that's the fifteen?
Yep, if we can get it all done within the fifteen, is that something the council's comfortable with, the budget amount?
I think that we approve that budget. I, I'm glad.
Okay, that's all I have on that. Um, the other item, I hate to bring it up, but do we wanna do anything with gambling? Ordinances?
I would like to see a local ordinance requiring that some of the money stay in Foley. For Foley charities. I, there's one in the packet that we didn't fold, fold on, um...
That was just a sample, and there's others out there.
That's a sample. I, I would be interested if we're gonna get into, I guess we already are into having these gambling events that we assure that some of that money stays within our local charity.
Yeah, and, okay, I can, I can certainly bring something back. Um, I also sent you the email that you referenced. I don't appreciate being accused of something I didn't say, so I did send you guys all a copy of that email, so you have it. Um, what was it exactly shared? Um, little frustrating. I, I will say my correspondence and communications with them have been a little frustrating. So that, I'm just gonna, the mayor can probably attest too. I think he tried to have a couple conversations. Um, I, I do sympathize. I understand their, their situation that they're in. I also want you to be prepared. You may be hearing from the wrestling club because they probably will withdraw their application for gambling. So I, just so you have a heads up, if you do, if they do reach out, they may be quite upset about that. And I think the mayor talked to a couple of their members too, and they indicated so.
Yeah, they do not like it.
So... That's all I have for my stuff. Thank you.
Okay, any old business?
Well, I think this would fall under old business. This, the county is set up a broadband committee to find out if it's a feasibility study, and I can forward it. Do you know about this, Sarah?
I'm actually on the committee. Mark and I are both on the committee.
So you guys can forward this to share. They're just doing a survey for your home internet.
Yep. It's on our website, it's on our Facebook page. Um, we're gonna put something in our newsletter about it, trying to get people, this is very important for people to do, so I'm glad you brought it up.
Okay. That's it.
Two-part survey.
It's super easy. I already did it for my own. Yep, it's real easy to follow, and they, um, also, they wanna know if you're serviced well, but also if you're not, or like, they can do speed tests and, and get all this data to know where we need to run these improvements.
Any other old business? Any new business? Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
You gonna call Dan or mine?
I'll call him and talk to him again.
Thanks for coming to the meeting.
They're gonna probably have, uh, they're not gonna be happy at all.
I don't know if they told me that.
Pick a number.
Or if I just... Yes, I thought it, yep. I don't remember them saying that, but...
I was very confused, confused with this game.